Good evening. My name is George Morris, vice-chair of the planning board. It's time to open up the September 28 meeting of the board. And I will let the people around the table introduce themselves, beginning with this young fellow here.
John Brown.
Jim Robinson.
Elizabeth Mitchell.
Pete Pecos.
Martha Taylor, town planner.
The first order of business on the agenda was meeting minutes, but the minutes are not prepared right now or complete, so we'll refer them to another meeting. The next is appearances and A and Rs, and the first appearance is Colby Village, D U A. And because it's Colby Village, and I live in Colby Village, I had to recuse myself. And Elizabeth Mitchell will be taking over as chair for the board.
Should I recuse myself because I'm of Colby?
No, no, that's fine.
Okay.
I'm of Colby.
Because I don't think there's anything too good for Colby. Especially the dead one.
Hi, I'm Tad Careno. And I'm here today from Colby Village, condo association with my fellow trustees, Paul Careno and Tom Coine. And we are, as you might know, Colby Village is a subdivision that consists of 12 single-family homes for age 55 or over homeowners. And we're here today to talk about the historic foundation that exists on Colby Village property. In 2003, the town mandated that the historic foundation situated on Colby Village property remain and that it be opened to the public. This was specified on the definitive subdivision plan of Colby Village by Apple Associates on drawing number S P dash 02 dash 88.4 entitled Existing Conditions. The current situation is that over the past years, the foundation has seriously eroded, crumbled, and deteriorated. And we've given a couple of sets of photos so that you can see the condition of those, of the foundation. As seen in the images, the bricks are strewn over the ground and are a tripping in safety hazard to anyone in the area, including the landscaping crew that weakly mowed the surrounding lawn. Moreover, dangerous sinkholes have formed in this area. A young child was seen playing in one of these sinkholes. She was seen submerged up to her chest and holding herself above ground like this with her elbows. That home, that sinkhole was filled by the homeowners and subsequently another sinkhole developed, which was also filled by the, by the association. Colby Village homeowners view this foundation as unsafe, as an eyesore, and as a potential financial and legal burden. The town has invited the public to use and explore this hazardous area, yet the town has not undertaken to make it a safe site or maintain it in any way. If anyone is injured here, Colby Village homeowners should not be expected to assume liability for an unstable structure they are mandated to house on their property. On behalf of Colby, Colby Village homeowners, we, the trustees, respectfully request that the town take action to rectify this unsafe situation by rescinding its mandate to keep the structure and by removing this dangerous element and restoring the grounds to lawn that can be appropriately maintained by our homeowners' association. We thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody on the board have questions? My understanding is that we're waiting for some feedback from town council.
I think, just, do you want me to provide any, any background information?
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay. Back when the, the subdivision application, actually it was the open space residential development special permit, there was an existing structure on the property which the board deemed to be of historic value. It was federal vernacular. And there was an attempt, at first the, the board requested that the developer try to find a buyer for it who would take it off-site someplace. That was unsuccessful. I think it was six to nine months, I don't remember which. At which point the board agreed that the developer could demolish the structure, but did state that the foundation needed to be retained. There would be some sort of an interpretive sign there and parking so that, that at least there would be some remembrance of this and some people could come and, and see what was there. There was a, a report done by the architectural historian Jane Carolyn. And the conservation restriction for the property actually does reference, reference the preservation of the historic resources related to education and information concerning the federal vernacular dwelling that previously existed on the premises. So in the, in the past, Colby Village has requested modifications to the plan. There was one a while back requesting that the slip rail fencing that had been specified for the project and sidewalks be deleted. And, you know, I think that was probably pretty simply within the board's discretion to, to do that. This, in this case, because it is actually listed as a resource in the conservation restriction, which was accepted not only by the town but also by the state, I think it gets to be more complicated. So that's why I would like to, first of all, get some advice from town council on this. And she's been flat out, so we haven't been able to talk about it. But based on advice that we've gotten regarding another OSRD where something was written into the conservation restriction, it's not, it's not something that the board, I think, can act on. You know, I don't, yeah.
Any other comments or questions from members of the board?
I got a question. Anybody know why these sinkholes appear? Where's George? Oh, there he is.
I'm right here. I'm appearing as my, as a neighbor.
I know, I understand that.
I can only speculate, but I would think there may be some stumps down there in the cellar.
It's gradually deteriorating.
It's deteriorating and it's letting us think.
Okay.
Now, it could be pulled a probe to see what's there, but no one's done that yet.
Yeah.
Some of those holes are pretty, pretty deep. They were pretty deep before we filled them up.
Right. When you said pretty deep, eight feet, normal basement, 10 feet?
I don't think they were that deep, but I wouldn't be surprised if they were four or five feet.
Okay.
And from what we've seen of the pans going back close to the beginning, it's only a feeling that the builder may have dumped a lot of debris in there.
Jesus, what a surprise.
Yeah.
I'm shocked.
If that ever happened to anyone else, I'd know. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And Martha, just, and what we convey to town council, she know about the deteriorating condition? To the extent that that impacts how it's being?
Yes, I mean, I'll provide her with everything that has been provided to us, as well as some, you know, some background.
Okay.
You know, and in truth, and if you look at it, obviously it was a foundation. It was designed to, you know, to take vertical loads. It wasn't designed to be filled with, with earth. And I don't know what, if any, efforts were made to kind of stabilize it or take that into account when a developer filled, filled in the basement. I don't know whether there would be any, if, any desire at this point to at least try to coordinate off so that people can't get in there, you know, just for, for safety purposes.
And is that, is that something we would do or that Colby Village could do on their own accord based on the language and the conservation?
Um, I don't, I don't know.
What's the footprint of this? I'm just looking at one portion of the brick. Hard to tell. It looks like...
There's only like two sides to it.
Okay.
There are several, hold on. There's several, several, yeah, it's here. It's only, it's only partial. It's, it's a partial foundation here.
I'm looking at both of those right there.
And here, it might be some, it might be small in the back.
Now, how do I get there? How do I find it?
Okay, go down Elton Street, go down Elton.
Oh, yeah, I know where Colby Village is as well.
Well, it's, it's right, it's facing, from Elton Street, looks straight ahead.
Yeah.
But it's right, it's, oh, here, here's the plane, just the plane right here.
Oh.
Yeah, it's right on your left as you're entering.
As you're entering.
So here's, here's Colby Lane.
Yeah.
And the existing dwelling is...
That was it?
Is it.
Okay.
Okay, there were actually more than one dwelling. There was a, a barn and a garage.
Okay.
I don't know about this.
Yeah, I have no idea.
Home and the driveway. This may have been the original home, you know?
Well, when I was a kid, bike field was a little country. If you had a bicycle, it was too long to bike over, you know? We didn't have cars then.
Um, there were other, there were other, like, photographs, yeah.
Well, the tree embarking up is what somebody had mentioned up, you know? Rooting up the bad stuff and simply filling it with decent fill.
So here's the, that is looking at this.
Yeah.
From this side. If you're looking at that way, that's, that's, and then there it is to the, the wall facing Elton Street. Suggest more information.
Was there any obligations, Martha, laid on for maintenance? Whose, whose problem is the maintenance?
That, I don't remember seeing anything, so I need to go through the documents a little bit more to...
All this my stuff? Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Got it, now.
We'll take that. We'll take it as our plan.
Oh, this is his, too.
Oh, yeah, right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim, what can we do then?
What should we do tonight if we don't have the authority?
Well, I think the, the board basically needs to kind of take it under advisement. We'll, we'll check the town council to see, you know, what, what latitude there may be, given that there, there are some, some issues with it, and then...
So for tonight, nothing?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if there's any action we can be taking tonight.
So I think that's where we're left. We will take it under advisement, obtain additional information and feedback from town council, and then be in touch when we have.
So that house was torn down as part of the original construction? There was a house there when Peter Breen moved in?
Yes.
Okay.
They tried to find a buyer for the house to restore the house and take it off property. I don't know if they were going to put it in a museum or what they were going to do with it. I have no idea. But that never happened.
Go, or got demolished.
Right. Do we have any idea who is liable if someone should fall into a sinkhole or get hurt on that property?
I don't, I don't think we're in a position to answer that. And I certainly wouldn't be comfortable without having read anything. But if there's a concern about that, I would, I would talk to your lawyer. Maybe that would be George. I don't know. But if, if there's a concern, you might want to do that. And particularly maybe pursue the option that Martha had referenced, if there's a way to coordinate off or, or keep people off of it to limit the possibility of injury. But I think that, that is something that you'd want your own council to opine on.
Thank you. Appreciate your help on all this. Thank you. Yes, thank you very much.
So I'll be back, I'll be back in time after. We've had a chance to consult with town council and then let, get you back on another agenda.
Do you have a copy of the conservation department memo that you were handing out?
The conservation restriction?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are you going to retain this or do more copies around me or I'm sure?
We're great. We all have copies.
And I can make more easily.
Thank you all.
Thanks a lot.
Have a nice evening.
Okay, I reassume the chair. You can't be back. Thank you, Elizabeth. Uh, the next item on the agenda is Scott Brown and Martha Pirro, follow-up discussion, ready request for waiver on setback requirement at two Wilshire Road, Development Martha Pirro, Adam Trudy Trust. Hey, Scott.
Oh, good evening. So I think we're, we're missing kind of one member tonight, aren't we?
Yes.
And how many of, how many of you folks, I wasn't able to make the walkthrough on site, how many of you folks were able to sort of essentially...
We had a forum.
I'm missing one who's not able to.
So I thought I'd pass these around. I, I think that, I want to send these to, to Martha last week. So presumably you might have taken a look at these. But I just wanted to, it's my understanding, since I missed the walk, walk, there were, there were kind of a couple of things in, in question out there. And I just want to sort of clarify that before we move forward. I guess there were some, some questions as to whether or not we were actually in, proposing to put this thing in, the utility easement. And we are in fact not. I think that these plans have actually come through. Is anybody have a colored copy?
I've got a very small colored copy.
Yeah, I got it here. I should have brought it. But I just want, I just wanted to, you know, and I think there was some, you know, considerable question, I feel, in terms of where the easement was. But in these latest plans, they've actually noted where that line is, and that's actually right, right here. So we're actually a few feet back, back away from that. Can you see that right there? Very, very light line. The hatch, the hatched area actually, you know, represents sort of rather large scale.
Not, not the red? It's above?
Not the red.
It's above that?
The red actually represents the...
The setback.
The setback line. Oh, but this plan right here we're looking at, so I've presented two plans. One, there's a buy, sort of a buy-ride plan. So what you're looking at here on the, the first sheet is sort of the buy-ride plan as if we were to, you know, make the garage conforming with setbacks. So the whole purpose of this is that actually to show sort of, you know, kind of a, you know, hardship that, that we're under in terms of trying to make this work as a workable garage. So that's the first sheet. And in the red line, like on this plan, represents the setback. And on the second sheet is, this is pretty much the plan that we've been seeing, a proposed plan. And so since the walkthrough, I've actually made a few adjustments to this and actually pushed it back and give it a little bit more, a little bit more relief on this side. So we'll push it back because I guess there was some questions for whether or not our footing was in the utility easement.
Right.
It wasn't before, but, you know, we'll push it back a few more inches.
Oh, that's good.
A little more space is certainly helpful. So that's really sort of the only major change. And I think in the last sheet here, I actually blown this up, so it's a little clearer. A little clearer. We have a, you know, clearly have, you know, the sort of setbacks delineated here and actually this hatched area is actually the, you know, the utility easement and that was in question.
And this plan, are the, are the setbacks on the rear, are they the same as what you had originally proposed?
They are, yes.
Okay.
So that's essentially it. I'm happy to, happy for you to answer any additional questions you might have.
Okay, Scott, on our site walk, there was a tree over here that's sort of to the right on the side of the garage, the proposed garage. And it looks like it has to be limbed.
Looks like some face of garage?
Yeah, facing the garage off to the right.
Okay.
And I understand that's a tree that has about four feet of mulch around the base, running up. And is that going to be removed or cut back? Because it looks like it's going to overhang partly garage, possibly.
Not really quite familiar with the tree. Was I discussed?
On the walk. You know, I didn't, I should get, what is it?
Pre, it's pre-existing?
Yeah, it's, it's a pre-existing tree. It looked like it was not in great shape. Mark said that he had, you know, built, when he, when he did the utility easement, he raised, you know, ground up, so tree.
Yeah. So as far as I know, I don't see any plans to remove that. And I think that, you know, it's in the best interest of everybody that this stuff stay, providing it's in good condition, because the more screen you have there, the better.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Depending on how the whole thing looks, yeah.
If it had to go, we would have to put in more shrubs there just to match up what is there to keep the shielding going.
And from the eyeball test, is the garage out of the drip line?
Looked like it was potentially overhanging a little bit. There was some discussion about, you know, at least cutting back some of the limbs, but it did not look like it was a very happy tree.
Okay, all right.
So, you know, I think the concern is that if it needs to come out, then we need to maintain the screen there.
Okay, we'll replace it. Yeah, okay, we'll, we'll certainly, we'll certainly do that.
We also discussed that the runoff from the garage roof would go on the concrete apron. So Mark said he would make provision to pull that off to the left as you face the garage into a containment area just to let the water run off.
Sounds reasonable.
Good to me. Now, further down, Martha, you asked if there was a tree in the proposed concrete driveway?
Yeah, not clear. We, we looked at another tree. I actually have photos of it that looked like it was somewhere in, in here that looked fairly healthy, but I, I don't, I don't see it depicted on, on the plan.
Okay.
And I think if it is to be, you know, ideally it would be preserved. If it is to be removed, it probably should be noted.
Do you remember what the caliper that was more or less?
I don't, but it was certainly more than six.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, it was larger.
Yeah, it was a group. I may be able to find it here. I was taking a video, so it might take a while to actually get.
Essentially, you think, Martha, you think that's essentially in the, the parking area up front?
Possibly. It looked like it was kind of right.
Somewhere in here?
Right in here, potentially.
Okay. I certainly hope it could work around that.
Okay, just for the camera record here, on YouTube in six months?
Yeah.
Sooner than that. The planning board does have authority to allow an expansion beyond the setback. The building is up to five feet out of a 10-foot setback. And that can be done by ask, by vote. And it's not a difficult thing as long as we appreciate what is being done. I think there are some conditions. This, this is a three-bay garage that sits back on the lot and produces another, there's another six bays on the house, another three bays. So you have three bays and they're going to be separated apart, I understand, for the use of the owner for his private storage of automobiles?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. So I think we got to throw some, at least, conditions to consider by the board. That the garage may be only used for parking all of the owner's vehicles or for maintenance equipment that goes along with the care of those cars. There be no repair work in the driveway. No commercial work allowed in the garage and driveway. No overnight parking in the driveway unless permitted for overnight guests, holiday events, and for anything requiring temporary short-term parking. And no data on parking in driv, it's for more, for more than three hours in the driveway, except as allowed above. Do you have any questions on any of those?
Well, it certainly sounds reasonable and consistent with the intent of the homeowner.
Well, I don't think that really should affect them, I believe.
No, not at all.
No, okay. Then, if, are there any questions from any members of the board?
I would just throw in the thought if the tree has to die, it'd be replaced with two little ones. If we kill one big one, let's put two little ones in.
Yeah, at least foliage or shrubbery.
I'm sorry?
At least foliage or shrubbery.
Something, something that's a grow, to grow back to that same size.
I agree.
Yeah, not right there necessarily, but somewhere on the property. And two for one is reasonable. It's not a major expense by any means.
Okay. Any other comments?
None for me.
Okay.
No.
Jim, okay. I would entertain a motion to approve a discretionary waiver that reared the setback requirement at two Wilshire Road, subject to conditions stated above and as shown on the offered plan. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
I agree.
Any opposed? Yeah, this has it. Motion passed.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And the next order of business is Harry Fulmer, request for site plan modification, time extension of site plan approval for ERA equipment, run along New York Court Turnpike, Monarch, Angelo, P I D L E.
Chad Donald.
I know, I trust. John trusts. Okay, come right up.
Good evening.
Evening.
Harry Fulmer on behalf of Mr. Chardello. So this is the site on Route 1 that has been on construction and is near completion. We were in some months ago to extend the deadline for completion and make it consistent with the conservation commission's order of conditions that had been extended. Mr. Chardello's engineer at Canwick Left, he moved the work to Williams and Sporages and asked them to begin the work on an as-built plan in anticipation of submitting that to the conservation commission. And during that discussion, it came up that there was still a concern at the commission, and John raised it as well from his perspective, with the area. And I'll, I'll set a plan out. We submitted some copy to Martha of the materials that were sent to the conservation commission last month for their, the request to amend and extend. If you're familiar with the site, oops, sorry. I'm going to make this, here's Route 1 on the side here, southeast. Slade Road on the south, York, York in the north up here. Here's the building, here's the cell tower, right? And so pavement goes around the building, and there's an area right here where on the original plan, it was shown as graded and well-impeded. It was during construction filled. There's a stone wall along here and it's relatively flat, although it slopes a little bit that way, for vehicle parking. And so just in terms of trying to resolve that issue, the engineer Greg Hartniff, who couldn't be here tonight from Williams and Sporages, did a calculation and determined and submitted that in materials that were sent in the commission that the stormwater from this area could actually be collected and directed to the stormwater detention basin if that were increased in size. And so to resolve the issue of whether there would be infiltration or runoff of any vehicle materials or anything like that, the proposal to the conservation commission was to amend the order of conditions to allow that to be done, to put the grass swale here. So this would be the end of the new pavement right here. You know what? I'm looking at it.
It's easier.
Sorry about that. So this, this would be a curb, this would be a grass swale to carry runoff from here down along the outside edge, just to keep that away from the edge. This is the weapon line here. This is the 25-foot, no disturb in there, no build. So the drainage from this new paved area would go to a catch basin here on the south. It would go through an oil-water separator into a swale, a grass swale here in a fort bay, and then into the detention basin. And they did calculations that were included in the filing. We dropped copies off with Martha in order Mr. Swatke could review the stormwater calc. But we wanted to come in brief you on that. We told the commission we were going to be coming to tell you about that, fill you in on the details of that as an update. And they're meeting again on October 12th. They just had a site visit there tonight.
Right.
Martha and John over there. And so in terms of just updating you on what's been happening at the site, that's the change, if you will, to the site would be to pave that rather than leaving it as it is or cutting that out, frankly, to the original design. The problem with it is that without this, it makes it very difficult to move vehicles around the site and to be able to store even a small number of vehicles there overnight. The other piece that was in the package that was submitted is just an update to the area over here to the northeast that was in the package that was submitted. This is a figure that shows, so up in this corner, this coincides with this cell tower area. It's just to, so the, the original plan and proposal and the plan is that there'd be stone blocks put along this perimeter just to create a limit of activity. And in the flat area, that's where it always been the contemplation of Mr. Chidone would be able to destroy materials there. It's referenced in the site plan application, loan, stone, and, and control materials and be able to keep them in, mainly just wants to be able to use like large concrete blocks to create bins, so that materials can be safely being controlled. The bins were not shown on the original site plan. There's nothing, like, there was nothing shown on the original site plan when Mr. Roscoe put it together that sort of showed you that's having bin separation. So, but in order to make sure that materials out here are not just here and there, which is frankly how they are now, to have them be there, there, and there. So that was just an update too, to sort of just a depiction of closed activity. So I, in a sense, this is more of a briefing for you. I haven't made the determination that this requires any specific action by the board. Frankly, that's your decision.
Right.
We don't think that it... We don't think that it does. We think it's consistent with what the original site plan proposal was. But we wanted to, given that frankly you have the consultant and you can look at stormwater calculations.
Right.
Doug Packer said if he looks at it and he's happy with it, Doug's happy with it. But we're happy to approach this however you'd like in terms of what, how you want to review it and take it under consideration. Answer questions, yeah.
Okay. John, can I ask you for comments?
Sure. Well, one would, forgetting zoning issues for a moment from a purely practical sense, interest of the planet, I am all for containing piles of aggregate, foam, whatever. Containment is a good thing. So, I believe there are some zoning issues associated with doing that, but in principle, I'm all for it. The, I would definitely want to have Joe, our consultant, review this, which is a planning board's decision to engage him. I would such encourage that we do that. There is substantially more flat space up here as opposed to not-so-flat space that was originally there. I haven't made a comparison. I was going to mark something up, I just haven't had time to. Of what the original drawing showed, which I have right here, versus the new one. But where you had this, now you have this.
You're talking about...
In a lot of places, yeah. Yeah, you got it back here, you got it out here, you got it here, you got it here, you got it here. Okay, there's a lot of fill that was not originally approved. I think that the board should have a peek at that and see what their feelings are about it.
Is there creating more runoff?
Well, anything, anything that is not vegetated is going to create more runoff, yeah. It's not like it was paved, but even an unpaved gravel surface is substantially more impervious than a vegetated, than a lawn or a woods or even scrubby woods. But that's, that's being addressed. I'm not concerned about that because Williams and Sporadges have recognized that fact, and that's why they're planning on increasing the size of the detention basin. I haven't looked at the infiltration requirements, which I'm very heavy. It's a D soil, or it's been called a D soil. I'm not convinced that it's all D, but I'm okay with that is. It's pretty bad. Whatever it is, it's bad. There's nothing good about it. So...
What about paving over the leaching field? Is that a concern for you?
Well, it was a concern in the beginning, and I've raised the issue and the way you usually handle that, and I would expect the board of health would want to see that. I haven't seen in recent years, it's an old job, yeah, the Title V drawing. But when you pave over a leaching field, typically you vent it because the bugs don't need oxygen, they're anaerobic, but they do produce off gases that need to go somewhere, and they're not going to go anywhere if it's paving on top. Did any, have you had a final inspection on that?
Yes, we did.
Did the, did the plans originally show a vent?
Yes, we had a vent.
You have a vent, there is a vent there?
Yeah, I think Matty saw it.
Yeah, I did.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember seeing one, but I'm not sure where I saw it.
Yes, it was right with the edge.
Okay.
It's on the edge.
No, I don't think that's a major.
Okay.
Yeah. The engineer suggested that the grade be raised over it so it's a bit more covered, I believe.
Yes, yeah, it was made to drive trucks over it. We designed it for the trucks to drive over it and all that.
John, as our engineer, the board has an attorney on whether it's a minor or a major change. You have any thoughts on that?
I'd call it major. I really would because so much has been done there. And it's a minor change if we make him take three or four or five hundred or maybe a thousand yards of material out of here. And that makes it look like it originally was presented to us. But I call it, I call it a major change, especially if we're storing material down there. And I have not looked at the zoning on that myself. Martha had some feelings on, on that being another issue, zoning issue.
Yeah, I mean, that's something I'd like to discuss further with Sam. And I know, as you pointed out, there was mention in the original application, the narrative, storage of materials on the site, but there was actually nothing shown on the drawings indicating, at least not that I can see here, indicating where that storage would happen. And my recollection is that this whole area around the cell tower was going to be undisturbed.
Well, that's what the drawing showed.
That's what the drawing showed.
It showed the new ones coming in up here to the old ones.
Is that the original?
No, this is yours. This is the original I have, right here. You see, this is the area question, cell tower, this is other question. No new conduits up here. The new conduits segue into the existing conduits here and here. And that does the slope. I'd be very surprised if this slope, the way it's shown.
That's what I'm hearing. Here, right here. Well, that's not shown on the drawing.
That part is not, yeah, this.
Flat, yeah.
It just dots.
So it was left flat. It was left flat. And it wasn't, I mean, part of the reason, as I understood, I wasn't involved in the time, the reason that boundary was drawn because those limits were there was to use that area.
Well, I, I wish I had done before then. I just was not able to just color in the flat spot that exists now because there was a slope as originally shown. This extends substantially further out from the building as a flat spot.
Right, right.
As opposed, now, what you've done is converted this into this.
There's a wedge of material that goes further.
Yeah, you came off the building, you came off the building and went down like that. Now you've come off the building and gone down like that. And that has been represented by Williams and Sporadges. Yeah, that's not a problem. And I don't have a big problem with doing this, except it would be really cool if this was what was presented originally. And I think, and I'm all for containing materials. I mean, the guy's a contractor, of course he has materials on the job site, but we still are obligated to conform with zoning.
Right.
Which is, this is grading.
This is grading, yeah.
Well, our zoning in the business of light industrial history requires a special permit for open storage of raw materials.
Well, I've, I've looked at the zoning and the permitted use actually does include a contractor's office with such storage of materials as well. So that is, there are, there are two uses in your zoning bylaw. One is for heavier duty, if you will, which is the one that I think you just mentioned. The other is light duty.
Right, if it's ancillary storage.
That's correct.
Then that's combined with this. So, that's why I'd like to talk to Sam, just kind of see what his take is on it. However, even that said, if, if the board were to determine that this is a major modification, then it needs to go through process.
Including a public hearing.
Public hearing process.
Well, John, you said that material were taken out.
Well, I was saying that tongue-in-cheek.
Okay.
You know, we've taken something that was permitted that was this big, and we've gone, made it this big, okay? Obviously, I'm exaggerating with my hands, but we've taken what was this big and now is this big. There are two ways to fix it, either permit the new impact or remove the difference between what's here now and what was permitted, which obviously doesn't make the slightest bit of sense. I mean, that was a tongue-in-cheek comment. I don't think we would want to ask anybody to do that. In fact, the doing of it could make more of a mess than we've got now. You'll never put it back the way it was.
Just, if I may, I mean, from our perspective, it's minor. I mean, I understand it's not insignificant from the standpoint of, John pointed out, is correct, that there are two areas where instead of being raided it's extended with that area. One is to the north and one is to the east.
Yeah.
The key from the conservation commission's standpoint, not yours necessarily, but is that there's no change in the limit of work in terms of the twenty-five-foot, no disturbance. And the main issue, of course, for Doug and the commission was just making sure that the stormwater could be accommodated with that overlaps of what your concern would be, obviously, as well, for proper management of stormwater. It doesn't change the use of the property, it doesn't change the scope of the use that was proposed. So, you know, there's no question that the grains are different in those two locations, but from the site impact, use, and stormwater management, we think it's a minor difference in most criteria. Not minor in the sense that it's not twelve square feet. When I hear John talking about it on a scale, the issue is large. But from your perspective, we'd like you to view it as, obviously, more minor than major from a process standpoint.
Or is this determined that the use and the building inspectors, that's his call, obviously?
Yes.
Because he's a zoning enforcement officer. If he, if he feels like that this is a zoning issue, then what you've just said is moot because we got to have a public hearing anyway if we got to change a different use to be permitted.
So we would have to wait on that determination?
Yeah, I'm not sure it's a long wait.
No, I think it's...
It takes a very long...
No, he's good.
Work that out, yeah.
No, so you are, the other part of this is a request for an extension of time. So what's been discussed with the CONCON in terms of extending the order?
So the conservation commission's extension ran and runs until the 21st of November of this year. I think we came in here and corresponded with Europe and all of theirs. We talked the other night about a one-year extension with the commission to go to November of next year so that this work could be done. Two elements are just depending on going forward, the oil-water separator right here, we're going to be getting a detail of that from the manufacturer, but it's a four-to-six-month, weekly time on getting that delivered. And so just to not get squeezed into whatever winter we begin to embark upon soon is just to move it beyond spring next year. And I think John made a point at the conservation commission meeting, you know, you want plants to grow and things just at the final paving. So to bump it one year, conservation commissions do one year or longer. They're not inclined to do more than a year.
I take it...
So we thought, just our bottom line is make them correspond.
I take it this will prosecute diligently in all probability. This will be ready for seeding just about the time summer sets in, okay? And it stops raining for a bit. So it sort of makes sense to finish it up when you've got a fighting chance of some rain like this week. Early October, you can start to expect some rain. Get the grass in and get it going about that point. I was concerned and I was not in favor, I didn't make a big deal of it, but I was not in favor of going all the way to November just because, you know, if you get the time, that means it starts later. The flip side is that I don't think it would be wise to order the grease trap, grease, grease separator, until our engineer has said grease over the design. And the design was not shown in the drawing, it just says grease separator.
The other thing about November is, as you know, the conservation commission may need at least thirty days of supplemental for a certificate of compliance.
Yeah.
So to be able to get the as-built done and into them in October to allow more growing. So, November being the expiration, there still is time ahead of that to be done.
Yeah, you can't start in October.
Right, no, you can't, you can't finish in November.
Now, you need to get going come spring.
Right.
As soon as it dries out enough to work in the spring. I don't think it's realistic to get this, to think we can get this cleaned up before winter.
All that to say, one year from the current expiration.
When does the current expiration?
Well, for, for the board, the last, there was an extension voted on on July 20th to October 31st, which I thought at that time was done to coincide with the order of conditions.
Right, it happened to be November 20th or something with the CONCON, but it didn't matter, make it the end of October, frankly.
All right. So, so I'm sorry, has there been an actual date discussed with the CONCON? Do they...
Well, we talked about it, but they didn't act.
They didn't act.
So they're going to meet in October. So even if it was October 31st with you, that's the same thing is we'd be submitting a certificate of compliance filing with them before the end of October. So that would not be a concern to have your extension go to the same October 31st date that it does now.
Hey, John, you said they already voted on?
I'm sorry?
Yes.
The conservation, the conservation commission voted to give them a year's extension, yes.
But they continued the hearing on this change until...
We get to the review.
Right, yeah, okay.
It's not, nothing's been approved other than the extension of time.
No, it's...
No, these changes have not been approved. One of the things was the site visit, the other one was a review of the hydrology.
Any comments from any members?
So that could really be sort of separated here as well. The board could vote on an extension of time and then have the review done and make a determination of whether it's minor or major. And if it's a year extension, even if it has to go through a public hearing process, there's plenty of time to do that.
So we should grant the extension tonight, or we can't?
The board could.
Yeah. Beginning as of November 1st.
Yeah, currently, it ends October 31st. So if it were a year from now, it would be October 31st, 2017.
I move to grant an extension for the completion of the project until October 31st, 2017.
Second?
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have that. Now, with the extension, I think one of the things we want to consider, going forward, once the plans are approved and the work begins, like the engineer and you and Angelo, to come together with a timeline and a target date for each of those items that had to be done. And I think it would be good if we got a monthly report I'll have in writing to Martin, just to say, this is where we are this month, and percentage done or reached target. And who do we want to handle that?
Yeah.
Because the last thing we want is to come back here next August or September and say, we need another extension. We really want to get it done, we want Angelo to be successful here. And we couldn't encourage everybody more to get it completed.
No, I think monthly status reports is a good idea.
Would be very helpful.
All right, we are, Greg couldn't be here, the two of his children have fevers tonight, but we're very pleased, I'm sure he's appeared before you, but...
Yes.
He's, I mean, he jumped right on doing this and did the calculations. So I think Angelo has found an engineer who can bring this to the finish line.
My first impression, I don't know, but my first impression was good, just approaching this appropriately.
I mean, as you remember, Alan Roscoe was working with Hancock and then he left there and he went to Canmit. Long story short, though, is that we first, when he was, when he left Hancock, I recommended to Angelo that he call Canmit because Fred Ford was there. Fred says, I'm retiring, but, you know, we'll have someone for you. And then, Can, Alan Roscoe's there. So it was like we were moving from that, and then it kind of went off the rails a little bit for a while.
And now I'm left.
Yeah, so it's back on track, and I think we have somebody who can do that. And monthly status reports are going to be...
Excellent.
A great...
And then, well, does the board want me to contact Joe?
Oh, yes, definitely.
Yeah, you're going to need some money too, right?
This will be a year extension. Joe's work.
He'll give us a proposal and then I'll send that to you.
As soon as you want to do that. Um, is there any, do you have any sense of his timeline or something like that? Is there any chance he would look at the CONCONs in two weeks? But is it possible?
I can certainly ask him. I don't know, you know, he does work for other, other communities, so I'm not sure what his time's going to be.
And if there's an overtime started that goes with it, that's, that's fine. Right? Overtime, get, you can look at it.
What are we going to do to get it done?
This is your copy, so I'm going to leave that right there.
All set?
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Matt will send us an email.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll send you an email, a copy of his proposal, just say no. And then what we'll need to do is get a check and that goes back into escrow and...
You know, you tell us, we'll send it.
No, no, he'll deliver.
Oh, with the letter or whatever.
Yeah.
Father, when do we want to poll the board whether this is major or minor?
That's an important one.
Yeah, you know, I'm wondering whether it would make sense to do that after Joe's review.
Yes.
I think that would make sense.
It definitely has to wait for Sam's to ring in, I would think. When do we meet again?
We meet again next week.
Next week.
Okay.
On the 5th and then the...
We're back to our regular schedule?
Yeah, yeah, 5th of November 19. Yes, yeah, 5th and then 19th.
You mentioning the building inspector?
Yes.
What do you, what's the process or what are you suggesting his activity would be?
Well, he is also the, as in many communities, the zoning enforcement officer. So he's going to bring in on what, his opinion on what this is. Is it a little change or is it a big change?
Do you have, do you want us to get a copy to him or would you...
I have, I think...
What did Greg drop, about three?
I have three, actually I have four because I got a copy of those.
I've got one of them, do you need it back or...
Not right now, it's fine.
So Joe, Joe would get one.
Joe would get one.
You can get one to Sam?
Yes.
And so you don't need any more copies? If you need any more...
I'll let you, I'll let you know. I got a copy of the filing to the CONCON as well. I was CC'd on that, so I've got four copies.
But talking with Sam is an internal thing.
Right.
Within town hall.
I don't think you need more. Do you need any more from members of the board on this?
I will, I will.
I think it's dropped off here, right?
Yes.
There's not, no more downtown?
No, no, we're here.
Yeah.
I feel a little wild.
Thank you so much.
You guys are welcome. Who do you need to know you're here? Wow, my brother and I would have been... Next ordered business would be zoning amendments. In August, one of our meetings, we discussed possible zoning amendments, which included heights of buildings, pertinent sheds, accessory sheds relative to buildings and other types of things like swing sets and chicken coops. And we also discussed signed bylaw, sign in. And what else? Let's forget. No, building height was the first one. That was the most critical item. And so as a part of that, Martha and I took a ride with our building commission, Sam Jocelyn out to Plum Island to look at six buildings that he had selected because of their mass and height. People were complaining about, that they were just too big and too massive. And we looked at each one of them and after we did, and they looked very high, Sam said they're all in compliance. One was not for other reasons, but as to height and mass, they were right within the bylaw. So part of the problem, I think, the CBA has, and I've been sitting with them for a while now, is really trying to figure out, to suggest to us how you measure height. And that's been a debate that's been going on for, what, about five years, Martha, probably more?
Longer than that.
Forever. And depending on the pitch of a roof, the height of a building is going to be different. It's supposed to be 35 feet for the mean roof, but if you have a real low pitch...
There's so many games can be played with that.
Oh, there's all kinds of games. An oval roof, you can have a dome on it. And it's all different. So we really have difficulty spelling out each one. And as I understand it, some towns, according to Eric Smon, have said, well, here's our 15 designs that we can use. You can do these for measurements, but we're going to be pretty much a one measurement town, I think. Just wanted to bring you up to date on that. Do you have any more comments on that old trip?
No, I mean, it was interesting because the ones that we looked at, there were some that, you know, you drive by and you think, oh my heavens, that's a four-story house. And in fact, you've got maybe partially enclosed but not heated space underneath for storage and two stories and kind of the attic space. And it is in compliance, but I think that people do get creative. So the key really is to try to find some way to, you know, keep, keep it not only in the letter but also in the spirit of the bylaw.
The things you want to try to avoid is third floor living spaces, which happens. And dark houses on top, the decks on top of houses that aren't overly big or set down just that they don't add greater to the height, and some of them certainly do.
Right. But still allow for a safer situation rather than having spiral stairs on the outside of the residence to at least allow internal access, but somehow still be able to control the space that it goes through. And it's a, it's a difficult question that the board's been struggling with for a long time. And, you know, each time a new definition is developed, you know, there are clearly loopholes, so...
Right, Sam can clearly regulate what he sees from the outside, but once the building is done and buttoned up, no one knows what's going on. So it's very difficult to enforce.
So I think, you know, what I'll, what I'll do probably after town meeting is just do a schedule, kind of working forward to the spring town meeting. And these are all things that we, we should try to address by then in some fashion. And the issue with the building height also is that there, there are issues on Plum Island that really don't show up on the main ones. And we talked about this the last time we dealt with it, is, you know, do you develop a bylaw which is specific to Plum Island, but then that, you know, I think that raises its own issues. So it's a sticky, it's a sticky one.
That's our next attack.
Yeah.
Here's our reports, Martha, anything with the selected numbers, it's a quick meeting to you.
Yeah, that was very quick. Actually, before we do that, I did get a late in the day email from Sam. Bill DiFrancesco, self-storage, has requested a temporary certificate of occupancy. Basically, I guess what he wants is to put a table in that front building, in the office portion of it, and then he's got some potential renters starting October 1st for, I think, for the second building, which is non-heated storage. And so Sam just wanted to know whether the board had any issue with his issuing a temporary CBO.
How much has he gotten paved now?
Well, he's not...
Or let's say passable?
I think at least the first two buildings. I haven't gone back.
Do you go top end, binder end, top down?
No, it's not top.
Just binders.
It's top, yeah, it's just been binder. It's sort of the, you know, kind of the wrap that he was, he was asking about. And he's still got to level it and put the top coat on.
So he wants a CBO of the first building only?
Well, to...
Or the second one so he can level the stuff?
It's the first building, just to put a table in the office area. And the second building for four units.
Is storage, yeah. Just four units.
No, for renters, for renters.
I'm sorry?
For people to rent.
Yes, okay. The whole building is available? Or only four units?
He's got four people lined up right now. So, and I didn't, I reviewed the decision, I didn't see anything in there that was really tied to occupancy in any of the conditions, so, and especially temporary occupancy.
That's not an unreasonable request, this sort of thing happens regularly and...
It's a start request.
Temporary CBO is a, you know...
I think it's great.
A partial CBO is a start.
So if you all feel comfortable with that, I'll just let Sam know that there were no issues.
Yes, very good.
Were we going to talk master plan?
A couple, a couple things on that, just from, from my perspective. We did, we had a meeting with Tony Kimmordick from NVPC on Monday regarding the transportation element. Chief Riley did join us, so we talked about the intersections that are most problematic in town. And Tony is going to go back and, you know, start working on kind of the final draft of the element with recommendations and goals and objectives for us to review. So I think probably in a month or so, we should be able to wrap that, that one up. We still have...
Housing and economic development is...
Right, that's in, that's in Roberta and Courtney's hands. We still have the community facilities and services, which John has been working on, and then natural and historic resources, which are mine.
Excellent.
And mapping from NVPC.
So how were the selecting?
It was a very brief meeting, there were only three, three in attendance last night. So Chuck was chair. And, you know, it was mostly kind of standard business, liquor licenses and things like that. Tracy did give them copies of the draft warrant for the special town meeting, but it was not discussed. They're having a special meeting next Monday at seven with the finance committee to discuss the warrant and vote on it. Then it's going to be posted on Tuesday at the latest. And I don't know, I haven't heard any outcome of the finance committee meeting as to whether they made recommendations on the different articles or not.
Do they need to go over them one by one?
They do, yeah, yeah.
John, you've already done the CONCON, right then?
Yeah, this, you've already heard the major stuff. Other stuff was moved.
The only thing, the CBA, I did make the meeting of suddenly, I put, but they had one hearing for Barthley and Lynn Duffin, DUFFIN, 3 Johnson Road. They're requesting a special permit and finding or relief as a proposed construction will increase the percentage of structures covering a lot located at 3 Johnson Road. That was improved, so that's all set. And they worked on 40B draft, and I think they've been looking at, was it...
The Bridgewater, maybe Ducksbury and Eastham, I think.
And they think they can work in one of those templates to put together a bylaw for us, get some rules and regulations together. We'll have more to say as that comes along?
Right, we have not gotten any word back yet from Mass Housing on the 40B. Paul Haggerty has been in touch with them and thinks that we may be hearing something soon, one way or the other. So we'll see. So it'd be great to get these regulations replaced. We actually get the application, because right now there's nothing telling them how many copies or what they need to submit or anything, so...
Is there any other business?
A couple things on NVPC. We had our last planning director's lunch with Dennis Gisoglio last week. Toasted him and wished him well. And we're working with Gerard and his team on developing the mobile app for the stormwater, which is going to be a great tool. They have just started working on that this week, putting it together. And James and his guys are going to be able to go out and inventory catch basins and outfalls, and it'll be very useful for the illicit discharge testing. I don't know if there's anything else you want to say about it?
No, really, I can't remember when we're meeting, but we're meeting next week sometime, if you get when. I think it was Wednesday, Wednesday morning? Is what he asked me about.
Oh, for the collaborative?
Yeah, well, no, to meet with Yvonne and...
Oh, okay. Oh, yes.
I suggested back to him that we do it right, you know, immediately after the stormwater collaborative meeting up in April. If we don't have to be a, be a new, I don't see why we do. Because Yvonne's there anyway.
Right.
And Gerard's there and I'm there, and James is there.
Yeah.
So why not? And they got a big meeting room.
All set? Everybody want to go home? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.